Alrighty, we're live on there. I'll just call this part of the meeting in order. So it's just a work session. We set some dates for our budget meetings. And this year, I'm setting here up my open planner. I want the meetings set because I don't want to get an email saying I didn't call enough meetings. I won't put you on your ass back. And if anybody's got a list of stuff they want cut, we want them presented and discussed and not brought up after budget is uncompleted.
Mr. Chairman, you can't tell us how we, what we decided after.
No, no, no.
But I understand what you're saying. Your request is to bring over.
Yeah, because last year, all I heard was, you had a list to cut, you had a list to cut. Why couldn't they cut? Mr. Coleman asked numbers of times for the list to be presented. It was never presented. But then after we approved the budget, I get an email saying I didn't call enough meetings and a lot more could've been cut from the budget. I would prevent that, you know.
Just that way since you mentioned that, it said, you know, I think we all talk for great diligence and all along on this, and it's helpful to me. Because I feel like we're all on the same table and I wouldn't know where about this is thinking. So we can be the most efficient for the community that we can be in, you know. Send it in an email. If we can start an email thread or something, just that we can communicate and keep working on the outside of our budget sessions.
I'm not telling anybody what they can say after we approve the budget. I just don't want to be blamed for it not being done.
I guess for me, the main thing for me is I just want us to work together. I don't want to do this on one or two numbers to have to pick and choose which one. Because in all honesty, everything that's asked for is needed. It's just a matter of.
In green, is it mean?
Yeah, that's right. And so, I mean, I think it's real important that we work on together rather than one person coming up with a list of things they think should be cut. And then in the end, everything could put back on one number. So I mean, I think it's, I think it's important that we work on it here rather than one person coming up with a list of things that they want.
Last year, there was a lot of comments about I would do this, try to do that. And unless it's in cyberspace, I'm still waiting on that email. The person gets into the idea. And that's what I'm getting personally, is let's collectively. You know, I'm, and we'll be open. If I have an idea, I'm gonna share it, you know. Because your idea must follow the idea for me. And then we can look and get the thing.
Your idea may change.
Exactly. How could that happen?
I kind of thought this year it might be helpful. But the budget last year, we started before COVID started and then we ended after. And we were very unsure about a lot of things because we didn't know what the effect would be. I think it might be beneficial this time in our very first budget work session, we take a look at the revenues especially and see what really ended up happening so far this year. We've actually gotten more revenues than expected in some areas. We've gotten less revenues than we thought expected in others. And another thing I'd like to look at is the relationship between revenues and expenditures. Because I don't think we've ever really delved into that. And that's an important piece. And when we're cutting an expenditure, are we also cutting the revenue too without realizing it? So I thought maybe our very first budget work session, we spend just a little bit of time looking at revenues and looking at the relationship between the two.
Yeah, I did notice that. And looking at the reviews already, where I thought we would have been lacking, we actually had more. So yeah, I had already noticed that. I think one of the things we should do before we start on our dates, and I want to take Justin's work schedule into account, that I will be willing to do as many Wednesdays as is humanly possible during the day to work on the budget. Even if we start at, you know, March 3rd and work our way down as close as we can get so that, you know, we can all have time in the evenings. I know most of us are working during the day, but I think if we can give a Wednesday here and there, I think it makes it easier for you, I know, in your work schedule.
I appreciate it.
Because you're probably the least flexible of all of us in terms of having that kind of, you know, set schedule. I also think one thing that I'm gonna throw out there right now is, I think in our first session, and I know it would change, but I think we should all know, come out of the gate whether we favor a tax increase or not. I think it gets everybody on a level playing field. I really do.
And we should be able to come and have some idea on that after the Devonport report tonight, right?
Well, that could be. It also could be that it might be more cuts. So I'm just.
Well, I mean, it's whether we would or wouldn't.
Right. Well, whether we need to or not need to, I think is, I think is a better way to describe it.
I can understand what you're saying. I don't know how we get to that point exactly, but it is. Seems like sometimes, and I'm inexperienced, but we'll kind of go back to, are we gonna raise? Do we have to raise? I see what you're saying about kind of make it a little more clear about how to get to that point. There's a lot of lists on this table.
Personally, I would say I enter every budget the same way without the intention of raising taxes.
Right, yeah.
But if it comes down, I think I have voted for one tax increase a lot of them here because I thought it was necessary. I would enter it not wanting to, but that doesn't mean that I wouldn't vote for it. If I thought it was necessary, then I'd vote for it.
But it would give us an idea of where we're all coming from, from the get-go. I don't. I'm going in not wanting to raise taxes right now. That's my own feeling.
I would say everybody at the table.
I would hope so.
I don't want to, because I have a special due.
You know, I was thinking that, you know, if we went through this budget one time with the idea of not raising any taxes, it would give us some idea then what we're going to. And then we could discuss, you know, if we need to add more or. I guess I'm saying the same thing you are, just in different terms, you know. Because, you know, I say I don't want to see a tax increase, it's in the air. Because I'm still not sure, we're not like we were last year either, for sure. What rich ones will do yet.
Right.
Well, there's a lot of departments that they've submitted budget, but they don't know what their final budget's gonna be. Social Services can't just throw that period by themselves because they're anybody's first June one instead of July one. So they're still waiting on Richmond to make up their bounds.
Dr. Gilsett, you said that you had a doctor's appointment on the 3rd. Will he be available next week for?
She's gonna want him.
You know, Pierce, Dr. Gilsett?
I speared it off.
It showed that they still want.
I'm also going back to the schedule unless you're working on that. Always happy for coming in early.
Me too. Wednesday afternoons are not, I would much rather.
Oh, absolutely.
I would rather get started early than.
You'll see the time changes on 14th, so. You'd have to help about coming in mornings and still having a long day to work.
I don't have a problem with that. I don't mind working up there. I just need to know ahead of time. Like, you wish that here, if we're gonna do March or April, okay. Or if we're gonna do, put the whole month on March. If I know enough ahead of time, but, you know, kind of leading the meeting to meeting, Kennedy.
I can do the whole month from March.
Tonight, just do Wednesday mornings until you get it done.
There you go.
I don't have a problem with that.
Start at eight o'clock or eight thirty, whenever we're normal. The office opens at eight, right?
The only, uh.
We start at eight o'clock, eight to noon or eight to morning to work.
Eight thirty works better for me to get here.
Well, on March 10th, I have to be at the Bachelor University to do play-by-play at noon. So I'd have to be there at 11:00, so that would be a hard day for that.
What if we just did, if we started at eight thirty every morning today? If we needed to adjust the end time, we could.
Right.
On the 17th, I had a New River Mount, Mount Empire workforce meeting.
A lot?
Yeah, it's at 10.
Well, they ain't virtually, they're like.
Move.
Yeah, I don't even know where. Next part, next Monday, I'll fall off from my shoulder in the afternoon. So I think what I should understand, we'll get here, everybody's phone has a commitment that's close to work on, but we'll get here, play a few hours and stick here and we'll get along.
I mean, I don't know. It's just a thought that we just said it's gonna work that way every.
Yep.
And sometimes we may have to adjust it for our department heads.
Right. And as far as the 3rd, I'd love for Mr. Gilsett to be here, but Cindy can take us through the first round if she needed to.
Yeah.
So Vince gave the 3rd at eight thirty.
That's just good, Justin, but I thought if we kind of got on that same schedule, it'd be, we know what we're gonna have.
Well, that's, I'm getting there. And these are budget sessions only, you're right. Third. The 10th. We have a day meeting on the Tuesday before that.
The 9th. You want to just roll with the, that would make it easier on me, just extend our 9th meeting?
It would be the day we don't have.
Oh, yeah, I got you. So the day we have a meeting?
The day, the day we have a day meeting, that's my day off, otherwise it's Wednesday.
Right.
So after.
So after the meeting, you say just roll with it?
After the meeting, you agree.
Yeah, I'll follow that.
You're already here.
Yeah, that would, that would ease me for the 10th. And I never hit it. Right, so after meeting?
Yeah, we get lunch at, you know.
Mr. Chairman, just sweeping up our agenda that day for a while.
Just remind Cindy so we don't.
Now, you had someone said at 10 o'clock at night.
The 17th.
You're not doing it on the afternoon.
Yeah, I would use them. I don't have to be here for everyone.
Well, we need your time to do it so everybody has the opportunity.
The rest of that week is not good, but I could do. How long is that meeting usually go? The 17th, 12th, 12.
Well, next question.
It's gonna be.
Do we want to try and have more than one meeting? Or do we need to?
What if we did, and then the 4th, obviously the 3rd, the night, they come in early, the 23rd.
That evening?
That evening. On the 23rd, excuse me, 23.
We could come in at 3:00. 3:00, 4:00.
3 would be good.
It would. My office has a different one, like that, like something else. I get here as soon as I can.
On the 23rd, 23.
I'll have to get here before 3:00. I'm gonna just come in at 3:00, right? Surgery back to here as quick as I can.
On the 23rd?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, we could, just, I don't know, coming in early will, you know, slow a little bit.
If we want to just our meeting, if we need to, we can stay late.
All about it. Yeah, while we're here.
So 23rd, how early? Yeah. Maybe if you want.
Sound a little better.
If we got here 4:00, it would give us three hours for a meeting.
Yeah, we get that. I can do that.
Yes, yes. There you go.
I'm just getting ready to rise in.
4:00, 4:00, whatever everybody else thinks. On the 24th, what do you want to get ahead? That's the, come back in the next morning at eight thirty.
Welcome to the conferencing service. Please enter your.
I'm gonna get a lot of done in March, I'll have to.
Yeah.
Sure, I can. Eight thirty.
Yeah.
So what do we say? Eight thirty on the 24th? Yeah. Eight thirty, 24th, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the 31st.
Yeah, Bob, nice. Look at that.
Last everyone, you got one page.
Yeah.
We got a big smash here at the 28th.
That sounds right. 30. Right? Not doing anything the week of the 15th?
Nah.
I think we should.
Well, I can't do it the 18th, more than 19th. But I can do something, the 15th in the afternoon, go a whole morning on the system.
Well, Vince, you got your meeting that day, right? Well, if we did a, would be a problem if we did a.
Are you on the call?
Or is that interference?
Okay, you lost me for a little while there.
All right, it does, yeah. Yeah?
Hold on.
That's 22.
You there?
That's five. We got through the 31st. That's five and we love March.
There we go. There we go.
If that's the only thing we got on here, we should be able to do that.
Now we can hear you.
The hard part is, you start having a hard time going back.
So what are we saying? Eight thirty, 31st?
No, March 31st.
Yeah, eight thirty, 31st.
I think we'll stick with first, we'll stick with that. I mean, I plan to come in, just, I plan to come in here with my list, all the pages. I'm gonna do better about doing mine at home and try to, that way we can get here and get to work.
So what do we say about the week of the 15th?
Nothing.
Assuming I can, but it's.
I missed someone on my other side of the room, Dr. Gilsett, Mr. Oliver, could you run a mine again?
Okay, and, uh, maybe the 3rd, eight thirty. Um, on the 9th, which was the day after the meeting. So we need to watch the June of that day to keep it sort of light.
But they'll take over now, now.
Yeah.
Are you waiting for the budget session or?
Both, both.
We're gonna take 15th.
Week of the 15th, we're not doing anything.
Yeah, on the 23rd, we, we're gonna come in at 4:00 PM that evening. And then come back eight thirty the next one. And then on the 31st.
Eight thirty.
At eight thirty.
We're giving ourselves a close on the week 13th. Right now.
I mean, this is probably, we wouldn't.
There's a possibility, Mark, it's not gonna, well, some states budget. Sometimes our stuff will change. I'll learn about it every month, if I, if I.
Maybe?
If we can have all our stuff. Balance them as they're plodding, plodding, or fluke and drink.
Yeah, that was a little disappointing as I started going.
All right. Six minutes? Six minutes of, uh. Well, until your first working, you won't have that day.
Yeah, as long as I know ahead of time, I'll just let the customers know I got a day off here in the week.
Yeah, I don't have any, I'll be very, very, that would be.
What do you mean, now, really?
Yeah, another conversation, you want to add after the 7:45 one?
Yes, please.
And that's the 8:01.
Yeah.
Does it help?
Mm-hmm. 8:01, does it help?
It has to be more of a specific.
It has to be the salary adjustment.
Okay.
Can you just, Cindy, you make this, this really, yeah, budget copies and put it in a folder. I don't need the folder. Put it in the manual version. Because I carry that back and forth and let my binder here typically. Do I remember that? I know I still have it.
We've got it two-sided and it was just the budget and not all the details?
That's it.
Okay.
That was just the long items. That made me finish this. Is that too much? Are you sure?
I'm sure.
It's just whenever. No rush.
You asked for Derek to be here at night?
No, he asked if he needed to be and I said I didn't think we needed him for anything.
I got a question.
We have.
I won't enjoy it, it's hard off.
Alrighty, we're back live again. I'll go ahead and call the meeting in order. As always, we have in our meetings with, uh, Colonel Mr. Coleman.
Yes, thank you, Lord. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for all your many blessings upon us, on our community and our country. Thank you for our freedom and liberty, Lord. God, we just ask tonight that you, as this God, has the decisions that we make for our community, help us to move forward. Guide us in the days ahead as we start our budget. We just ask that you have the upon our country and pray that you heal our land. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Our prayers are blessed with the power of the highest states of America. In the name of our republic, the righteous stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first thing on our agenda is a thing we'll not be dispersing. We have some questions, I'd like to take a look at them.
So. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. If you have any more. Okay. Um. So I know in our budget, the Commonwealth attorney has explained some things about telephone, but it seems the, the citizens' telephone bill for that department is really aligned with everybody else. I mean, by, you know, summer 32, summer 15, summer 13, summer 49. And then that one is 264.15. Now, I know in the budget, he said that he had gotten a separate phone system, but that still seems a little odd, right? Oh, my gosh.
Well, you'll probably have to go through a lot of.
Yeah.
We'll do what's left, we're not exploring what you're at.
So for all those lines. Well, that seems our wage staff's gonna be every month?
So, what is it?
Yeah. No, I'm sorry.
First one, you're not gonna.
Yeah, I get it. Oh, I can go to citizens to get that, probably. Maybe. But still, I mean, that's just. Outrageous.
I think we'll work that there now.
And how many lines? Six?
Seven.
Seven lines? Hey, really? Huh? I mean, that just seems so out of line with everything else.
Just go ahead and make sure that I have the budget in the budget.
What is? Is it his budget? That was all I had.
Any other questions? What was happened for the motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Motion second in your discussion.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Cook and Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
No.
Mr. Cummins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, that moved up 10 minutes over, but we'll go ahead and have our public comment period. It is the intent that all persons attending the meeting of the board, regardless of handicap and conditions, shall have an opportunity to participate. Any person present requests or requires any special assistance, please let the board know in order that arrangements can be made. Uh, if you're here for public comment, you come up, you're limited four minutes. You just give us your name and the district you come. And public comment is a one-way street. We listen to whatever you guys say. If you've got any questions, you can leave them with the board or one of the staff members and we'll get back with you on them.
All right, Bob, I know you just.
I know.
Chomping at the bit, you know. I'm Ossman, Indian Valley. I just had a question on the recent removal of the dumpsters. I had, well, I'm in a situation where I had a little trailer, I could hook it to my little mower, ew, and run it down the hill and dump it. And then now I have a, have a little car that I use to take it once a week over to the old rescue squad. Now I'm having to drive all the way to Willis. So I just wanted to let you know people are not really happy with it, but we're hoping that we can get the situation resolved. I just wanted to say that. But thank you all for all your work. We're happy with all of you guys. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tonya, Indian Valley, and I just had a question about something that I read from your last meeting. And it was about the park and the deed in the park and how that is not resolved. But yet the board is looking to spend money on something they technically don't own. And as I understand it, so I would like some explanation on how that's happening. Because if you don't have the deed, you don't own the property. And our taxes should not be spent on property we don't own yet. Thank you. I know we don't normally respond to the public comment, but I want to tell you the very happy news, the recreation deed was recorded today.
That's been our, I would, you know, is just getting it recorded. Anyone else? Nobody else, I declare the public comment. Nobody else, I declare the public comment period closed. Help me answer here, man, answer the...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I've got a handout for y'all and anybody else in the audience, so if you bear with me, I can turn these out.
Always count on you for good reading, Mr. Chairman.
Sleeping, Mr. Chairman, I think it's what you need to do.
Yes, we agree.
Well, I'm being hopefully optimistic up front.
I was gonna say, if you thought of it, sleep, I'm afraid, keep coming, I don't wanna deal with it. Can I move this down to tabs out of the files, right here? Is that open? Again, for those of you, um, I think y'all know me here, but, uh, uh, again, David Rhodes, Davenport, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Um, I'm gonna walk you through, um, our debt and capital planning update. Uh, you can start with a little background, if you would, um, on page three. Um, for those in the audience, and, uh, again, know that you don't have so many things on your journey, uh, I don't want to take it for granted. Um, but as you know, we've been a good fortune to be your financial advisor for the last five or six years. And in that time, we've done a number of things with you, and I just listed them here. Hard to believe, we've worked on eleven different financings, uh, since that period of time. Uh, four new money borrowing, six refinancings, and that strategic restructuring, all of which, which has put us into the position on that last bullet, which was basically to incorporate the, uh, the new school completion. And that was a two-part plan of financing that we succeeded the, uh, last fiscal calendar year, I should say. So, if you recall, um, in 2020, interest rates were highly favorable, and we did some refinancing, and that was important. We saved almost, uh, six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and, uh, we also had of that about a hundred and ninety-seven thousand uh, for fiscal year twenty-one that we're in right now. And that's gonna be important because we're gonna recommend, as we said, to use that as the base for a capital reserve. And so, all of this, when you think about it, when I started working with you, we talked about being strategic and holistic and recognizing your school needs down the road, and that's really where we are today, is how to do those needs most smartly. So, the 2020 school completion, um, again, finished all of that. Uh, we were very fortunate, we went through the VPSA, Virginia Public School of RIT. We did that in the fall pool, and you may recall the next page, we ended up getting an all-in rate of, I'm gonna just round it up and say two percent, that's it. Um, and we estimated that it was going to be three point two five percent, so we ended up, uh, saving, if you would, about three million dollars in interest. And where you really see that savings is the last bullet point here. When we talked to you about doing that roughly fourteen and a half million dollar school, we indicated that it was going to take the equivalent of two additional pennies here in fiscal year twenty-one slash twenty-two. Because we got such a favorable rate and we had the refinancing savings, we only needed one of the two pennies. So, one of the things that we're gonna talk about, remind y'all, is as we go on to the twenty-two budget, we don't need two pennies, we need one penny to take care of what you did. So, that's the, the first part of that good news, and that's sort of, again, as I indicated, I'll come back and give you that absolute, and that's the absolute on that project that's now going forward. So, interest rates, um, are very favorable, although the last three or four days have not been so favorable. We're seeing rates pop up. Um, now, relatively speaking, when you look at page six here, um, you see that spike that happened in 2020. Um, that's a much bigger spike than for the moment we are seeing, but it came down again. We don't know where rates are gonna go, and what we did do for the monies that you've asked us to look at, we put in some cushion. And so, again, we may go past that cushion, but right now, we're still within that range of what we're gonna talk to you about in the next few moments. So, this is the tax exempt rate. The next page is the taxable rate, just to give you a sense of, again, where everything is, very, very favorable. So, on page nine, we talked about being strategic. And in being strategic, we don't recommend have to staff a capital reserve fund be created. Where's that money coming from? That's the savings that we have right here in this fiscal year. So, we don't have to add any new monies to it, it's just the monies that you have on saving from the refinancing. So, that is sitting, and we'd like to use that strategically, and we're gonna call that the capital reserve. And again, you'll see that theme in the next few minutes. So, that money is already there, it's not asking the board to come up with any new dollars for that particular reserve fund. Okay, if you move on to key considerations, page eleven. What we understand is that county has roughly eight million dollars of new money capital needs that need to be funded over the next several months. What we also recognize, and we feel the same way, and that is, you have built up a very strong unassigned fund balance. We know your auditors, like ourselves, have suggested that we don't touch that money. It's, it's, it's there for emergencies, it's there for, again, if you need a small lice to melt, that's fine, but it's one-time money. We don't wanna use one-time money to take care of recurring debt service. That's not a good best practice at all. So, we also know that right now, that is roughly thirty percent of your annual general fund revenues. Very solid position to be in, and you don't, again, want to cut away from that if you can avoid it. And I think you can avoid it, and we're gonna show you why. In addition, even though the county does not technically have a credit rating, we've shown you in the past that we do compare very favorably, and we would have a very strong credit rating if and when we go to the credit rating agencies to get a formal rating. So, with interest rates low, and with, again, your county in solid financial shape, we're gonna talk about going forward, and we think we can borrow is eight million dollars strategically and very cost-effective. So, let me go to page twelve and talk about not only the capital reserve, but also being smart about using some of the meal stacks that you have set aside. You have basically, on the next page, you'll see about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars that's been built up. And annually, we're gonna assume that you have about a hundred and seventy-five thousand of meal stacks each year to be used towards capital projects. So, again, think of it's like a puzzle, you took different pieces and you kind of put it all together. So, in addition to that, if you go to page thirteen, you can just see the details on the meal stacks. As I said here, if you wanna think about it this way, the fact is that we have that monies there. What it really allows us to do, and one of the scenarios we're gonna show you, is to think of it this way. Instead of having to borrow for, like, say, the three hundred and fifty thousand for the new rec building and the office remodeling, if that's what you want to do, you can actually pay cash for that, that's one of the ways to think about that. In addition, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, if we get that on a recurring basis, that's roughly about a penny, a little bit more. And that's basically, excuse me, not a penny, that's basically what the debt service is, I should say, on what is the Shell Building, the part that is not going to come from grants. So, you may recall a few years ago, we said, let's be smart about how we think about the Shell Building. Let's hold our fund balance, let's not use that, let's see what happens. And as you know, you now got, we've gotten a very solid grant, and so the net amount that you have for the Shell Building to finance is one point eight million. That roughly trans into, translates into about the amount of the equivalent of the meal stacks. If we use that, we recommend you use that going forward to pay the debt service on that. And you'll see how that, again, all comes together. So, if I could, let's go to real estate tax rates, and I know obviously the citizens and y'all care about that. So, here on page fifteen, you know better than anyone what you've done tax rate-wise over time. Back in eighteen, you raised it five pennies, and in nineteen, from eighteen to nineteen, our fiscal year, and it's been held steady at sixty cents. As we indicated, when we started looking at all this, if we did not get such a good result on the school, we would have had to go from sixty to the equivalent of sixty-two cents. What we now have to do is to go from sixty to sixty-one cents, because, again, we just got that much less debt to pay in terms of debt service. Again, interest is much less than we had estimated, so a good thing. Then, if you go to the next page, we wanted you to see how you compare to your peers roughly. And interestingly enough, the peer group average before some of those folks actually have to do some raising of their taxes this coming, uh, fiscal year is basically sixty-one and a half pennies. So, it's right there where you would be with that penny increase, if you would. So, keep that in mind, again, everybody is a little different. Uh, you look at Franklin County, it's right there at sixty-one cents. Uh, but again, high is Pulaski, it's seventy-seven, the low is Bedford, fifty, but it averages right there at sixty-one cents. So, again, for the citizens and we all, for perspective, you can see what might happen in a few moments.
Glad to meet you down Montgomery County.
You know, we did because level one is much higher, and number two is, and we work with them, but it's, it's more, we'll call it just a bigger place.
An outlier?
It's an outlier, and if it was there, it would be way past the seventy-seven, as you know. So, that would add to the average, but our goal was to think of somewhat more modest-sized counties, if you would, Mr. Chairman.
But it is our neighbor.
But it is your neighbor.
And it's indicative of our area.
Yes, and it would further underscore the point that your relative tax rate is much more modest than Montgomery. So, I certainly can, for the record, add that if you want.
No.
And, and we're, another, another thing in that line, too, with us, the penny is approximately bringing in a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty-five thousand. The last I saw in Montgomery County, it was like between six and seven hundred thousand dollars per penny. So, and the same thing, can you, you know, Franklin County, we're comparable, but when you look at what per penny theirs is bringing in, it's, 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 if you go deeper into it than just the numbers, you'll see a major difference.
Absolutely, and we work with Franklin as well, and I do, and it's, it's a very, very good county and very well-run. Um, they had to raise theirs, and they're looking now at a major school program, and they know it's gonna be several pennies to undertake that school program that's still in the, in the very much the talking stage, a serious talking phase, so absolutely. And one more thing, you did, you may recall when that, um, when the, when the whole problem happened with the high school in Montgomery County, and they basically had to borrow seventy-five million dollars, that was not expected. Um, I wanna save our memory, it's been a few years since we did that, I think we had to raise about five pennies just for that, you know, expected or unexpected, I should say, project, that, uh, they, they hated to have to do, but they did it. Okay, so, if I could, let's go to the capital funding analysis, this is sort of the, where the level begins to run on page eighteen. So, as I indicated, you basically have almost eleven million of projects, if you look at it, they're on the right-hand side. However, the county's responsibility is eight million dollars. Why is that? Again, because in the Shell Building, you're gonna get a grant of two point eight billion dollars. So, we're really talking about big double digits of projects that you're looking at doing, almost, again, almost eleven million dollars of projects. So, your responsibility for the moment there is eight million dollars, keep that, look at that. So, on page nineteen, the reason why in part your fund balance is so strong and why you're looking good is because you may recall, we recommended doing a line of credit back in twenty nineteen, rather than just using your unassigned fund balance. You did that, and we only pay interest on the monies that we borrow, that's not been a very expensive, uh, cost of money per year. But, at the end of the day, what we're gonna do is have a four point six million dollar Shell Building, of which two point eight is gonna be the grant, and then it's gonna leave us one point eight million to be financed, and that's gonna be part of the overall analysis that you're gonna see in a few moments. So, if you go to page twenty, this is the way in which we are thinking about, let's see, page twenty-seven, thinking about taking care of all of this. So, as I mentioned, the very top bullet point to remind everybody, we still need a penny for what has already been done, as opposed to two pennies. Now, with regard to the eight million dollars, if indeed you look at scenario one, it's not what we're recommending. Scenario one would be you borrowed, you're gonna borrow basically eight million dollars of projects. You don't use meal stacks. You don't use the meal stacks fund that you created. You try to pay for the radio over ten years, which we think is too fast. You don't do any strategic layering of the debt. That could cost the county then, on top of the one penny, another four and a half pennies. So, that would put you considerably above that average. That's not what we're recommending, that's if we do things and not do research. On the right-hand side, scenario two is what we think makes quite such. And that is, rather than borrowing all eight million, we can borrow about seven point six five million because we have those meal stacks dollars that you built up. So, the first positive is we're borrowing less money. The second is to use that money, as we said right there in the bullet below, for what could be roughly about three hundred and fifty thousand for the new rec building slash office remodel. The third point is to use that one seventy-five every year, and that'll help defray the debt service. It's roughly the equivalent of a penny. The next thing is to do the radio project over fifteen years. We think that is, uh, both prudent, and it really does more recognize the life of it. Uh, before Terry left, we talked with Cindy and I about really how to look at the, at the radio project, and the feeling was fifteen made more sense. And then finally, we'll look at strategically layering all of this in, not extending any of the debt, but being smart about it. And if we do, the good news here is that we need then is an extra two pennies. So, that's what, in effect, the net effect of almost twelve million dollars, eleven, twelve million dollars of projects, borrowing about eight million dollars, that's what we're looking at, is the equivalent of about two pennies from the county. So...
David?
Yes, ma'am.
So, what if we take something from power one and put it into something from power two? What if we go ahead and finance all the way?
Okay.
In power two?
Um, we certainly could do that, um, you know, we're gonna have some cost of issuance anyway, so, but that would be for both, in fact, about him. So, is, what's your, what's your thinking when you put, in terms of adding a little bit to that?
What does it, what does it do to allow more?
Oh, I see, I see. Um, you know, I have to run that, um, it's hard to know, depending upon how fast you wanna pay off that extra roughly three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I'll show you why in a minute, that's a good question. So, let me go to, let me see what I wanna say now, let's go to page... If you go to page twenty-three, if you do that with the right thing, okay. If you look at the various projects, they're not all being financed at the same number of years. And the reason for that is, for example, that ambulance is only gonna last five or so years. So, the approach, the prudent best way to do that is you only finance the years that you have. However, when you look at something like the Shell Building, that should be there easily for fifteen years, and that's why that's being financed over fifteen years. Now, there are some of your neighbors that do a twenty-year financing, I think from... I think from our perspective, you can afford to do this faster. It makes us more sense that you can do it, do it in fifteen years. And our thinking was, if all of this basically is the equivalent of two, two pennies, we thought that that's, because we want to be in a mode where you know you're going to have other needs down the road ten, fifteen years from now. So the faster we can pay a lot of these things off, it just builds up what we call capacity, the things that you will have to do down the road that haven't even been identified.
But we also have capacity coming online for all the debt service that is leading us in.
Right, we do. But this, for the next several years, the next couple of years, we need those two pennies right up front to, to help take care of, you know, all these projects. Because this is, you know, think about it, you have done in the last, with this, with this roughly eight million dollars, you know, plus the things you already does, we should point it out, you've really done a very sizable amount of projects over a five or six year period.
But we know this coming off is already factoring in a fair amount of projects.
Yeah, I know it is.
So we'll eventually have, as Cindy said, we'll eventually have a drop down, but not for several years. And that's because again, we're really trying to make sure we get all of this in on top of the new school that you, as you were able to put in. So that's, so the takeaway, if you would, is that you need the one penny to begin with, no matter what, or the equivalent of one penny, let's say in that way. And then here, if these, if these rates are what we ultimately get, we need the equivalent of another two pennies. Now, having said that, to go to your question, I could certainly run that, and that's not hard to do. But I do think, it won't make a, a big difference, it's not going to. And I think I would look at, you're probably thinking about something maybe along the lines of fifteen years. So if we took that roughly three hundred and fifty thousand and then over the fifteen years, it's, it's, it's not going to move the needle very much. What's really going to move the needle more will be what really is the interest rates that we ultimately get.
Right.
And we won't know that for another couple of months. Having said that though, one more point, what we can do, and you know that we've done this before, we can go out and ask the banks what they would charge for an interest rate, and therefore we'll have a sense of whether we do eight million new money or we do seven point six of new money plus the cost of issuance. So I think the advantage there is, we're going to have an idea, and you don't have to make that decision now. But what you do need to, I think, just get the arms around as a board, is that it's going to be the equivalent roughly of about two pennies. And that's short of maybe something extraordinary happening on interest rates. And if it does, we'll know it, it might end up moving that needle, but hopefully it won't. I think we are, yeah, we think we built some, some cushion in, we'll see. The other thing we talked about, if we don't like what the banks are offering, we always have that opportunity to put together what we call a public sale, get formal ratings of the county, that takes a process. But again, you do that, that's another way potentially of maybe keeping the costs all in, down. But we'll cross that bridge when we get there. I think what we really want from this board tonight, or maybe after this, it's your call, is to give us some direction if you feel relatively comfortable with this order of magnitude and the way in which we're thinking about this. I think that's really what we're looking for. I don't know if we need that tonight per se, I don't think there's a magic to that. But again, this is me giving you that, our overall perspective. So, page twenty-four, just again, gives you a little bit more of all of this laid out a little bit differently. It's nothing new. Just gives you, again, just some more of the, the details. But the very bottom of the yellow is, is the, is the focus. It's the one penny plus the two more would be three pennies. And then what we do on twenty-five is to say, okay, if indeed you went with the various scenarios, scenario one or two, you can now see what you would look like assuming nobody else tax rate moves in this springtime. You go to sixty-three pennies, and again, the average would still be somewhere around sixty-one and a half or sixty-two pennies probably. We do know, I'm not going to publicly say, we know certain things with the other communities who work with most of them, there'll be some movement on some of these others, more than likely. So I think the average for you, if you go to sixty-three pennies, more than likely, it's going to be right there. You'll be right about the average. As you said, I think, Mr. Booth or maybe Mr. Chairman, you know, I doubt that it's apples to apples for everybody. To add to that, we worked with Lowndes County, which is, which is up in Northern Virginia. And so we asked them yesterday, because we're doing something for them, and I've worked with them since nineteen eighty-three, I said, what is your one penny do you bring in? And they are just shy of ten million dollars per penny. Ten million dollars per penny, I thought that. And their rate is considerably higher than yours, I can assure you, you know, significantly.
That's what has changed in the thirty-eight years you've been working with Lowndes County.
Yeah, in fact, I told them, I said, I think I've been around, you've gone from Richmond, I'm not from there, but I said to them, I said, I can remember going up on Route twenty-eight and seven.
Right.
When it was a stop sign, a stop sign. And now it's one of those new fangled flyovers with lots of, and, and like, I think they're trying to take every tree down that ever existed. I've never heard that in my world, but, and, you know, it is. So, lastly, on next steps, on page twenty-seven. Again, if we, you won't put your heads around this, like some of the recommendations, like the capital reserve, using the meals tax strategically, we think that again, we could probably put all of this together in and around the time that the near fiscal year start. Excuse me, around fiscal year starts around, around July one. So that's, that's what we've got. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So any questions or?
I've got one concerned, the fire truck, ambulance, and garbage truck, both of those have already gone out and under contract with those, so we really need this faster, at least those three items faster than that.
So one thought, and again, you know me Cindy, I don't want to scare the board, but you're right.
Believe me, we're scared enough anyway. You're not going to add to it.
Well, one thing that could happen, and we do this, and bond counsel could give what we call, and we didn't really done this, so I, I think we did. If for example, we have to, for whatever reason, if they, if those monies need to go out for some of that, the, the county, you're able to pay some of those dollars and then reimburse yourself from refinancing, and when you do the financing. That's why we do, which we've done with you before, we call it reimbursement, as we've shown, that's something.
There's something along the line, I would tell them.
Yes, and you may have really done, I just honestly can't remember that, but it's a very easy thing to be done, and it can be done at the next board meeting, if it hasn't been done.
I think we did something similar.
I think you did, you guys said anything, we can, we can ask, we can ask. So, that's my, that's my speech, as they say.
Irregardless of how we move forward, I guess, are you recommending that we go ahead and set up the capital reserve fund anyway?
Yes, sir. And I recommend.
Irregardless of what we do with the rest of it?
Yes, every meals tax, dedicate the, the one, dedicate that going forward. So help to say that service, whether it's eight million you borrow, or seven and a half, or whatever it is, using that, yes, I would.
I've got two different things, I guess. The first thing is, I'm a little concerned about fifteen year finance on a radio system, because I think we went too long on the last system, and hope I'll put ourselves in a position where we're paying for something fourteen years from now, when a new technology comes out that we're having, you know, that's a little bit of a concern. But something, you know, more up to date on what that would look like.
Let me, let me add to that, because you know, you make a very good point. So, as we said a few moments ago, while your debt service is going to be basically level for the foreseeable future, I think it is fair to say that we look out in years thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, there either may be a drop, I don't have it right in front of me, I don't remember exactly, and it's not. But I do think it gives you the opportunity over the next several years down, meaning several years out, just like the meals tax, to start maybe putting some dollars away so that you could indeed pay that off quicker than fifteen years. I think, we, we feel like fifteen years is the absolute longest you'd want to do it. But when we talked with Cindy and Terry and I, we met a couple of times in, I remember, December, we realized that that system was, was really out that fifteen, and yes, it was shot, meaning it says useful end of life and all of that. There's no doubt about it, but I, I see your point, you know.
Yeah, I just don't want to put us in a position where we say, well, we're going to make it last another five years because we're making.
I understand.
Well, you know, that's just where we're at, you know. I don't want, I don't want to be in here fifteen years, but I don't want, I'm just bored, I don't want to run. And I'm here, cut the old calendar. But you know, I just don't want to put somebody in a position, but I'm not, I'm not really up to speed on those systems, so. Those are, give opinions on that. The other thing that I would say on as far as just dedicating meals tax, I, I definitely think it's a good place for the meals tax. If we're, if we're taking individual items to dedicate to it, I would probably lean toward like public safety, and the trash truck, I don't know if it needs to be.
It's also really, and that's good, no, because, thinking of it this way, it, it's, it's very fungible. It's, it's, it's basically the equivalent, unless it becomes more, it's the equivalent of a hundred and seventy-five. But we assume by the way, that it never grows. It's essentially one seventy-five every year, and that's how we assume. So yes, it can, just like the three hundred and fifty thousand that we just happened to say goes to, let's say, that project, it, it's, it's really what's really doing, that three fifty, is going towards reducing the amount of debt we borrow. The other one, seventy-five, because it's continuous, is going towards helping defer the equivalent penny increase. So think of it that way.
And I would just say the reason I was thinking of that is because I know back when we first implemented the meals tax, put it on the, on the other hand, that one of the things we talked about was, you know, people coming driving into the county to eat somewhere would, there's a certain level of cost, whether it be solid waste, emergency services, that that meals tax would defer that cost, that citizens would be paying for, so that's, that's the reason that if it is dedicated in one place, I thought, yeah, I thought it, sake to your solid waste would be the proper path.
And like I said, that is so fungible that you could argue absolutely that that's, it's what it's going for, yes. Any questions?
You were talking about fifteen years, I just sit down and figure it out. Some of this equipment we're replacing, twenty-eight years, I was on the board in ninety-three when we started this process. Some of the equipment's twenty-eight years old. It should have been replaced long ago, do I?
You're only fifteen, brother.
Yeah, fifteen and a half.
So, let's, let's, uh, let's circle back to this capital reserve fund. So, you're saying to take the one hundred and ninety-seven dollars, which on your estimates is about the value of one penny of the real estate tax that would be needed. And the reason why you want to do this for us as a county is so that if there are times when our expenditures exceed revenues.
So what'll happen is, right now, we know the way the cash flows will work, the expenditures will exceed the revenues in the next couple of years. So we're going to use that one ninety-seven that's right there now to help defray you needing to do more than the two pennies that we're talking about.
So those expenditures are exceeding revenues because of what?
Because the debt service is going up because you're borrowing eight million dollars, thereabouts.
Or is it on top of the fourteen and a half million dollars that we've already borrowed?
That's right, it's on top of that, that's exactly right. It has nothing to do with the fourteen and a half, that's right. The fourteen and a half you already done.
Oh, I know it's already done.
No, I'm saying, no, I mean, but that's already been done, and that's where the factor, you know, knowing we need the equivalent of one penny.
I guess, I guess that it's already been done.
Is it people one penny a fence, is what you're saying?
Well, that's, well, two pennies.
You're not strict.
It's one penny on the school project, right?
Yes, one penny on the school project.
Right.
As opposed to.
And then two cent on the other project, right?
As opposed to what we thought a year ago at this time, was we had told you, we're going to need two pennies for the school project. Instead, we ended up now needing one penny.
Well, if you go back to the, before, prior to our refinancing, you were projecting at one point that we would need between four and five cents just to do the school project.
That's correct, that's exactly right.
Well, now this one ninety-seven actually came from the refinancing, it freed up the one ninety-seven, so we already have that.
That's exactly right, yes, I'm saying, we do, yes, that's the whole point, it's right there.
So this one ninety-seven, if they had done this years ago, we wouldn't have gotten into a problem back when. This is to protect us, isn't it?
No, it's because we refinanced at the time where interest rates went down, so that freed up some money. We had, we had certain things with a higher interest rate, they'd give a refinance, and it freed up that amount of money.
Yeah.
This has been your point, I mean, you've been talking about.
Yeah, you can say this, yeah.
There's nothing new here.
Right, right.
We've been discussing this, you know.
I know.
He's saying now that we have this money freed up, let's not just spend it on something else, let's put it someplace where we know where it is.
We know where it is.
We are going to do that.
We're not leaving this to the public.
And the other point is, is the unassigned fund balance at thirty-one percent is ample, is, in my, in my opinion. That unassigned that we talked about right before that you're not using, that's a very solid amount, that's ample. If I'd done the same comparative of that thirty-one percent versus the same neighbors, you'd sit there and say, we're looking pretty good. Now, some will be even better, but you know, but you're, the thirty-one percent is, in the, in the, in the world of best practices, is considered very strong. That's, that's a very good number.
This turned out to be more than I expected.
It is, yeah, I know, it's good. And you all did, did very, very well in terms of keeping expenditures under control and managing. So again, that's Cindy, and you know, what you've done the last couple of years, so that's a real powerful factor.
And our department is, it's been a group effort. And I don't think it's all been just board, but.
Well, but it's everybody, it's all.
It's a very conscientious group of people.
That's right, that's right. And that can't be said about some of, you know, some, some people in that comparative that don't look anything like that. And makes it for a much more difficult discussion. And that's the other thing too, Mr. Booth, part of the reason you achieved such good interest rates and were able to refinance was because there were people there, meaning people, banks, that wanted to lend to you at very attractive rates. So it's not like the bank says, all right, you get to change with the next local government. Every local government is treated differently. And that's important, good and bad. So by keeping that fund balance up like you're doing, and by having these structural balanced budgets and doing what you need to do, that will be favorably viewed by not only the banks, but what we call the rating agencies, if we end up doing that approach.
You were talking about the refinancing way back. We looked at it a little bit when we were at our worst, and there wasn't enough interest rate change to make it worthwhile to do it. I mean, there was almost no savings every time you did all the paperwork, you paid about everything you had to pay to do it. So that, that unfortunately was not the option just at the time.
Yeah, because when you think about it, when I came to you about refinancings, all the results we had were better than the estimates that we had.
Right, yeah.
So, you know, again, a little bit of luck, but a little bit of creating your own luck because you are favorable to the banks.
And you were talking about these fluctuating.
Yeah.
They could fluctuate either way, depending on the scenario.
Yes, exactly, and so like I said, I, I feel like with interest rates starting to rise, I mean, I, I agree, and make no mistake about it, I, I'm hopeful they all will say, let's get going and let's not, you know, fill the alley, because rates are, right now, moving up. Doesn't even stay that way, who knows? But that's gonna be elsewhere.
What we're looking at right now, if we do this, is maybe with the, with the budget, go ahead to the budget, with this plus what our prepared budget is before we work on this, that would put it at about some size, wouldn't it?
I have a question. You know, the budget you sent out to us is about seven hundred and forty and change, sure.
Correct.
Now, that, on the expenditure side, that includes a debt service estimate for something like, for this?
I included an estimate of three hundred and fifty thousand for the payment for the eight million.
But you did not show any additional change on the revenue side, did you?
No.
Okay.
This is just the debt service payment.
Part of that number that you're talking about, about half of it is tied up with this.
And I was just taking a wild guess, three hundred and fifty thousand on eight million.
That's gonna be, it, it's actually
Probably a little less.
It's gonna be a little less, that's okay. You know what, and I didn't realize this, so I apologize, it's a good situation to have. If you go to page thirty, let's, let's do that, okay?
See, you landed on a good note, did you?
Yeah, I sure do.
Number one.
Alright, so, so, so here's the way to look at this. This is your existing debt service, right here, okay, this existing debt. Now, notice here that if you think about fifteen years, so we're gonna, we're gonna start having that debt will be realized in twenty twenty-two, because that's the fiscal year, so, alright. So fifteen years or so from twenty twenty-two is gonna be roughly twenty thirty-seven. Notice where that debt service is in twenty thirty-seven, go on the right-hand side. That payment is a million one, whereas in twenty twenty-one right now, it's a million five, almost a million six. So we get a drop down, relatively speaking, of six hundred thousand dollars. That goes to the point, Mr. Yoder, that yes, we're gonna be laying in some other debts. And we're still gonna have some natural drop down within fifteen.
Six hundred thousand dollars per year in twenty thirty-seven.
That's right. But, but the sobering part of that, the sobering part is, there's gonna be other needs, no doubt. So it's not like, but that's who we go by, that's how, and that's how we started even when we first started working with you, layering in from your overall portfolio. But for the citizens, I think the takeaway here is important. If you look at twenty twenty-one fiscal year right now, okay, your debt service, you start into twenty twenty-two, on the right-hand side is fifty-three point seven percent. What's that mean? That means that in ten years, almost fifty-four percent of all your principal is paid off. So that's a good situation. Because if you think about it as an individual that happens to have a home, if you have a hundred thousand dollar mortgage, after ten years, you pay off about twenty-five percent of that. You're paying off twice that level, and you should, because you always have other needs. But that's part of why you're able to do a variety of things, and why, I don't know if I'll be around either, but if I am, I think my wife wants me to be, so I'll be in my, my late seventies. But the point is, you never know, I still be doing this.
If she wants you to, there's a good chance you will, so if she didn't want you to, you're just out of luck.
Been married forty years, so I'll probably have to do that. So here's the thing, you know, when you, when you think about it, again, there'll be other needs, but there'll be, again, some, more than likely, some other ways of looking at it, there'll be some potential refinancings. Because even though rates are very favorable right now, the borrowing might be good. If we only have at that point, let's say, five years to run on some of this, like we did for some of the things a few years ago, not extending it, it's just all of a sudden, a five-year rate may be considerably more attractive than right now, we're doing a fifteen-year rate. So there's a lot of things that play into cash flows that maybe your successor, if you're not here, will, will hold, someone will tell him.
I don't hardly care if you're not here in fifteen years. Not enough to do. So I've got, I've got an even bigger overall question for you, as an intelligent individual in this field. I sit back and just kind of watch, well, let me say this first. In the past, the county has, this is kind of the way counties work, and I think it's probably a good way it's worked. You know, you take it on big chunky debt, and then we spent, you know, when I first fell on board, Joe and I first fell on board, we spent four or five years where we were just slogging through it, you know, you're just, you're making the payments, you're not taking on any new projects, you just build, uh, reserve and just trying to get through, and you know you're down the road, you're gonna do a project. And that's just kind of the way it works, in a small county, you can't do everything at once. So I know that, you know, looking at that graph, it doesn't scare me too badly to think, you know, there's gonna be a few years where we're gonna have to go along. But looking at the overall scale of the economy, the amount of money that's coming in, and stimulus money and the federal spending and stuff, you know, I've heard some experts say there's a possibility of inflation. And so I, I'm gonna ask in your thoughts on that, it just, you know, if there is a possibility of inflation in the next few years, and higher interest rates, now's the time to pull the trigger and do it, and you don't have to lowen rather than wait a few years and that cost of the radio system would double or, you know, whatever, and interest rates go up.
So I guess, let me say this, I'm not an economist.
Sure.
I have no, even if I were an economist, I think half do one thing and half say the other thing. The only thing they agree on is after it's over, they know exactly how. I've been winning every Super Bowl.
Yeah, right.
Always been good betting on Monday, but it's close. So who knows? Having said that, here, here's my recommendation that I learned years ago when I started. If you have a need to do something, you do it. You just set yourself up though, if there is a possibility to refinance it, you put yourself, yourself in a position, okay, for whatever reasons, to refinance it, be it for interest rates come down, or you have struggles to make the payments. Hopefully that's not the case. That's sort of the way I look at it. And, and so that's why I, those, those eight million dollars are not me telling you, nobody elected me. I'm, I'm just reacting to what was given to us, and trying to figure out scenario two, what's the smartest way to maybe do this. So that, that's really my answer, I don't think anybody really knows where interest rates are.
No, I don't.
Now, they're very favorable, but I will say this to you, Mr. Yoder, I can remember in nineteen eighty-seven, because it was like a red letter day, April's, April Fool's Day, okay? Rates were great the first three months. And on April first, it's like somebody just, like, just shot a cannon or something. And from April first to June tenth or fifteenth, the interest rates went up two and a half percent. So if I said I was assuming we'll borrow at three percent, I would then have told you ten weeks later, it was five and a half percent. And it was like, oh my gosh, it's like, and then almost later, in October, that's when the stock market crashed. So the bond market, which is what we're talking about here, real bond market, pre, you know, sort of, was a precursor for what was a really bad stock market crash. That was the one that scared the jeepers, more so than, I think, even twenty-ten, or two thousand nine, twenty-ten's aren't right now. But you know what, it all came back, those rates did come down again. So who knows? But I can tell you, you know, I'm talking to you about two pennies, if rates go up two and a half percent, boy, you know, that's not gonna be two pennies, and I think y'all, you know, you're all like, you know, we won't have built enough cushion in. But then again, you may have to do certain things and say no to other things at the last minute. You don't have that ability to do that. So, probably not with an ambulance and not with some of those other things, no, you don't, you're
And just like before, when we were refinancing too, another thing that's gonna play into this is, what would they want for collateral?
Yeah, so, again, I think what's gonna happen here, I'll, I'll, I'll keep saying, I know the track is still available. I know, it's like, you're right, I'm glad you said it, Mr. Yoder. Yeah, this, this will be a situation where, never say never, I always tell my colleagues that work for me or with me, I say, I'm the, the old guy. We will certainly ask for a structure without collateral, but we've talked to Cindy and even, you know, her colleague Terry, and we feel like, okay, this is most likely, it'll be one where they say, okay, the radio system, not that they really want to own it, but it's their own credit, fine, that's gonna be probably the essence of the collateral. And then that's, that's, that's very typical.
Which you'll notice in three years, I have become more accustomed to that. I did bite you really big on the first year.
Yeah, but y'all did, and you know what, we were, we were successful, you know, you think about it, we were able to trim back that collateral, and that was the other part of doing the refinancing, the grant was at the Branscombe Center, that was freed up.
I, I have a question on that capital reserve.
Yes.
When you fund it for one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, on page thirty-two, you have your existing debt and the use of that capital reserve, and you're still using fifty thousand of it for fiscal year twenty-two. And then on page thirty-seven, you have, under scenario one, using fifty-five, so would it be fifty plus the fifty-five? The forty-nine, five, thirty-seven plus the fifty-five, twenty-five?
Let me look at this, okay, so this is, well, two different things actually, Cindy. This is the capital reserve, page thirty-two, before you do anything new. That is, this doesn't factor in anything, it says initial deposit, the capital reserve, existing debt. Then scenario one is when we actually use that for the scenario, that's why it's a little different.
Okay, but I guess what I'm confused at is under the initial one, existing debt, it shows in fiscal year twenty-two, drawing almost fifty thousand out of it.
Right.
So if we did that
And that's because, remember, we needed the, and we need the penny, that's, that's part, yeah.
So if you go to scenario one, are you drawing that fifty thousand plus the fifty-five, twenty-five also?
I'm not following your fifty-five, twenty-five in scenario one.
Column R on page thirty-seven?
Yep. Yeah, where's, but where's fifty-five, I still don't see your fifty-fives.
Okay, come on, one twenty-two.
Right?
Fifty-five hundred.
Oh, you mean, yeah, I definitely, you said fifty-five, I was fifty-five.
Fifty-five thousand.
I'm so sorry, don't follow, you're Oh, five, yes, okay, yeah. Now, this is just some of the fine tuning of the
So I'm planning to be actually be using the fifty thousand for our existing debt in fiscal year twenty-two. And if we go with scenario one, we'd also need to use fifty-five, twenty-five.
Yeah, but it's not double counting, I think, I think you're, we're not double counting what we're using, I'm not, I'm not really
I'll try to rephrase it. If we did nothing at all right now, in fiscal year twenty-two, we'd need to use forty-nine thousand, five, thirty-seven.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So if we do use that
It's not on top of that, no.
It's not on top of that, okay.
No, no, no. No, because again, it's two different scenarios, one is, it's, the first one is more theoretical, because you're gonna do some things. So, no, it's not one on top of that, just look at them very separately, independently, because what you have to look at, where, and that's, this is the proof of that, look at the ending capital reserve fund balance, you see that? So it shows, alright, how certain dollars come in, certain dollars go out, okay?
So when I go to page forty-two
So let's go to page thirty-seven, so you see that the ending capital reserve? Notice here, because you use your, I'll use the word fifty thousand, you know, okay? You go from one ninety-seven to one forty-seven, that's roughly fifty thousand. Now go to thirty-seven, page thirty-seven, look what happens, you go from one ninety-seven to basically one ninety-two. That's why you're only using five, so I'm on top of that. That's your, that's your proof of that, okay? So what other page are you thinking about?
Our page forty-two on the scenario two, we'd be using twelve thousand.
Okay, right. And that's because, that's because what we're doing here, if we use the capital reserve here, remember, we're adding some pennies in, so they need a, just a cash flow here, we're gonna get the benefit of some of those dollars coming in. And that's why, if you look at page forty-two, let's go back to way too far right in column versus, I think it's page thirty-seven, yeah, look at, you know, any of the years, you'll notice here that, again, the cash flows are a little bit different. Because it's with certain dollars paying to certain things, and then, interestingly enough, in scenario one, which we're not recommending, you see the ending dollars is like eighteen million dollars, that's because, go back to my point with Mr. Yoder, we don't always need the equivalent of four and a half extra pennies. That's as if we never dropped it down. In reality, what would happen in either of these scenarios, they both have lots of extra dollars by the end, that, those extra dollars would really get sucked up on new capital projects that we don't even know about yet. That's my point.
Okay, so whatever we end up doing, you need to keep this in mind, that we will be drawing out of the capital reserve fund in fiscal year twenty-two.
Yes.
And depending on which scenario we pick, that will be one of these in there.
Absolutely, yes, and that's why I said, think of that capital reserve, it's not, it's not going into that unassigned fund balance, it's gonna be a separate little fund, and what will also matter is exactly the timing of when we borrow it, the exact interest rates that we have, and the exact final amount that we all agree on will impact what really that capital reserve looks like year to year. And there's one other thing I didn't mention, you'll notice here, we never assume that you earn any interest on that capital reserve. Well, now, interest is not very high, but you're gonna earn something, or you should earn something. We don't assume that either, so that could be and should be a positive over time. So again, it's just an order of magnitude, this is the way we look at this.
I answered the question I had for you, Cindy, but, um, in the current budget, I'm liking on, do we have some money building for the interim debt for the, um, the shell building?
I was about to say, I think I had a hundred twenty
I think you did, you should, yeah, you should, that would be
That would be
You did, yeah, that's already factored in. In fact, if you remember, if you remember, I only have to look at the page, I remember, the hundred and twenty-five that you did was covering some of the payments, I want to say, for like the ambulance and some other
Actually, I think he's, Lauren's talking about fiscal year twenty-two budget, she just gave him.
No, 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 I'm asking, I'm asking the, the current budget.
Oh, this is year twenty-one.
You know what, I'll say this, we were very careful when we, when we, back in December, working with you, it's not like we haven't factored that in, there's not a, there's not gonna be a surprise in that regard.
I'm just wondering if there's, if we're gonna have some money there that we multiply.
In fiscal year twenty-one, I don't
I don't think so, I think we tried to purposely
And we were respecting
No, you know, I'm pretty sure we did, that's why we set it up this way. We basically estimated how much was being drawn down on the line of credit to help take care of the shell building till the grant monies come in and all that. So that's, that's sort of how that's, that's not a surprise, and it's sort of factored in already.
Just a thought here. And I know that this is all a matter of debt service on what we'll be borrowing for now, but it might have been instructive to perhaps cash mark the debt service that we incurred just this year, since it's so fresh in that existing debt. I mean, that would have been, like on the number thirty-nine. I just, I, I don't know, it just would have been, it just would have been real, I mean, I know what it is. And I mean, I can draw my little line over, but, yeah, I mean, it's just still so fresh and new, so, I don't know.
What's your system then?
I don't, yeah, well, it is now, yes.
That's an easy thing to do.
I got you, yep.
I think the biggest thing for me is just, is looking at this, um, there's probably not a lot, not a lot more debt that we can pay on in the next few years, if we do this. I think, and I think that's one thing that board would need to understand, that, you know, in the next few years, we're probably not gonna be borrowing projects.
And you know what, we, I remember when, when we were doing the school project, we knew that the radio was, it was out there, and it was just gonna be the next, and it's gonna be hopefully, relatively speaking, aside from the shell building, it's ready, it's already factored in. The shell building and the radio, we knew that was gonna be absolute coming in. Again, and your, 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 the, the equipment, I'll call it, that's ongoing and your, 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 the equipment, I'll call it, that's ongoing constantly, you've gotta do that or otherwise, you know? So, yeah, that's, this is, this should hopefully, but again, this is, your call, this is better, as best as I understood it, and Cindy can underscore it, if I'm right or wrong, this, these projects should basically hold you for a number of years, short of the state or the federal government putting a mandate on something that we don't know about, and you'll be then in the same category as everybody else.
Or a catastrophe.
Or a catastrophe, yes, you know, that, yeah. Which is why that unassigned fund balance is smaller.
Sure.
You know, I mean, you don't wanna use it, but that's there, that's why you have it.
This with the school stuff, probably, at, at minimum, four to five years.
And basically, what I'm saying is, is, I just want to make sure everybody here understands, on this board, that after doing this, we're gonna carry another phase of that kind of, all right, we're gonna pay it, you know, and we just, and grind and pay it.
That lots of the certain here raises taxes way more than we ever have.
But the other issue with that is, you start getting to where you're a little bit unbalanced, where you're carrying too much debt for the size of your budget, so...
Yeah, we've been mindful of that, I guess.
Right, so I mean, that's, that's something we need to...
We need to do...
There's one more thing that's still kinda bothering me. This, uh, quote, it's on page sixteen...
Sixteen?
The real estate tax rate, we run it through here, and it makes sixty cents, and it goes plus one to sixty-one.
Right.
And then we go to, uh, page twenty, the scenario two.
Mm-hmm.
And it has, uh, two pennies, three pennies in total.
Yeah.
I thought that one penny was already built into the sixty cents.
No, not at all, no, no.
It's not.
Not even close, no. No, so, yeah, no. Everything does...
I think that, I think that was confusion last year.
I thought when we had...
We had a discussion about that during...
I thought when we had the, uh, reassessment, it was the equivalent amount of increase, but it stayed the same rate, I thought...
Yes and no. Meaning, the equivalent got into sixty, but that was separate apart from the fact that you were still going to need an additional two pennies for the school. That, because I remember there was talk about going from sixty to fifty-seven, and that, that was a discussion, but that is separate.
But I, I still wanna go on record to make everybody understand that with the reassessment, our tax rate went from fifty-seven cents to sixty cents, and now, we are looking at sixty-one, sixty-two, possibly sixty-three cents. Bottom line.
Yes.
Not equivalencies, not anything else. Okay, just to get it in straight terms.
Yes.
I do remember that discussion last year, that we had, about, um, whether it was also a, and if we would do the tax increases or upcoming year.
Right. And I, I thought that the ending thing was that we would not...
This year. That we had made that...
Right, that's what I thought.
For this year, right, but we're talking about for next year. We're not talking about next year.
So we didn't have to go to sixty-one, we didn't have to raise a penny on the initial three cents raised by not bringing it back down to fifty-seven cents.
That's correct, right. I'm talking about going forward, not going...
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I guess I'll say this, I'm, I'm a pretty strong advocate for not raising taxes on most years, but, um, last year, I voted against it. Against the, um, tax rate, because I wasn't supportive of that, you know, but anyway, that being said, the reason I say that is, looking at this, I think that, from my experience with, um, fire and rescue, and I'm sure the sheriff's office is in the same boat, um, I think, I think we've gotta have a radio system. I think we can't just keep abandoning the existing system. The shell buildings, I've been, I've been a huge supporter of that for years and years and years, it's something that this county desperately needs to get more jobs, I think it's the only way we can grow our economy here and, and, uh, be able to support, you know, twenty years from now, support, um, our school system, fire and rescue, whatever, solid waste, whatever the, um, needs are of the county, you know, we've gotta grow our economy, because at some point, you can't just continue the tax, uh, plan, you've gotta have some other revenue sources. So I've been a huge supporter of the idea of a shell building and trying to grow our economy, um, and then, you know, if you can, even look at our call numbers on, um, Rescue Squad, it is, it is absolutely amazing, and the time that I've been involved, you know, I was involved with Rescue before I ran for office, and just over the last ten or twenty years, our call numbers have just went through the roof, and, uh, transport times is still the same distance to the hospital, so as you get call numbers up, that equipment's wearing out, I mean, it's just where, we're putting a lot of miles on, on rescues, on ambulances, and, um, I guess, solid waste, our numbers keep going up, I mean, it's, it's, uh, things are made more and more disposable, just like we, it's just what we're dealing with. Uh, nobody, I don't think there's a citizen in the county that wants trash being left, laying on the side of the roads or in the, you know, ditches or over the bank somewhere. It's something we've gotta do, um, is pick up, provide that service to citizens. And then last, on the fire truck, I think, I think this fire truck is really the wave of the future, where, uh, where this county's gonna go, because we're, we're getting more and more people that are building back off the road, they're building in places that you have a hard time getting into, and I really like the versatility that, you know, I think there's a lot of good things about this fire truck that can be used in the county, and I really, really like the way that, um, Mr. Saros and the fire department have thought about some of those things, and, uh, I think it's gonna be extremely useful. And so I don't see anything in here that I would, um, I think it's all very, very needed, and, and if we've gotta do three cents to do it, I think I'd be as cool as that.
I agree. I don't like it, but I agree. It, I mean, we're, we're at a point where, it's like you said, none of this is, well, none of this is a wish list, it's a needless.
Well, it's an investment in actual, you can actually point to how it's gonna make citizens' lives better, and how it's an actual, um, money getting spent on things that are gonna actually have an impact. And sometimes in the budget, it's hard to do that, when you look at some line, it's hard to, hard to tell a citizen, you know, yeah, we spent X amount of money on this, but, you know, somehow it's gonna make your life better. Have a fire truck that can get in places, that's, that's gonna make your life better, if you need it. Rescue squad.
And a radio system is also gonna help. Citizens and first responders.
We've got hundreds of people in this county that have put in their time without getting really any benefit out of it. Um, to fight fires, to run rescue calls, and I mean, the very least that we can do is to, to provide a system that where they can communicate, if they're in trouble, if they get in a situation where they need extra help.
Without leaving the singer driving to the top of the hill to try and get, and we're not gonna cover them all with this, there's gonna have to be more down the road.
This is the base that we've, I mean, it's, it's just hard to ask a fireman to go into a burned building and not have the basic radio system to be able to communicate.
Look at your county here in this house, how this fire department...
Rescue team.
Fire department work hard, you know, to keep you right.
They really do. I told them, I took my life, I took my lifetime ownership at the first year, and I told them, I picked the right month to do it. I think they ran fifteen calls in one day, right after, like the week after I, um, I found out, and it's gonna work for us, you're lucky.
Cringe your honor.
Uh, I'll put my tie on here.
I mean, it's, this radio system in particular is something that is so needed, and it's, it's the idea of saving someone's life, not just the first responder, but the person who's in need. And, yeah, there is no fluff here. I mean, it's widely known that I was not in favor of spending fourteen and a half million dollars on a school project. I think we could have gotten more for less, and I will stay that way until, you know, that thing is completed and we'll see what it looks like, but I think we could have done, I mean, they first wanted twenty, we got it down to fourteen and a half, and I think we still could have gone lower, then there would have been more money for what we need here. Um, you know, I live in one of those places that our fire truck needs to go down very long driveway. Knock on wood that, you know, it's never been needed, and ambulances, you know, that's the scary thing for me, is our, our EMS right now, because this county is only aging, and I really feel like we're gonna need more in terms of our EMS. I think that's gonna be something that we're gonna need to look at down the road. That's what scares me more than anything.
Well, one plus in that area, if you, I noticed, and I don't know how they are this month's numbers, but some of the last month's numbers, I will give credit to Montier Rescue Squad, they have picked their pace...
Yes, they have.
...the number of calls they're responding to, and I think you're gonna see that grow even more.
That would be reassuring, for sure.
I can't, you know, my curse of balls, kinda clouded like everybody else's, but I do, I, I think you're gonna see those numbers continue.
What do we need to do to, to...
First off, I'd like a motion that we create the capital reserve fund and then fund it with one hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars.
What is that, the net motion?
Seven.
Seven.
I'm glad you did. I'll bring that in first.
Motion, second.
Uh, Ms. Cookenbock?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Terman?
Yes.
And I think the second thing we need to do is, uh, is authorize Mr. Rose to go out for an RFP and tell which scenario we're interested in.
Yeah, and see what we get, and if we don't like what we get, or we wanna recommend we do it, so, again, I think we typically follow it like a dual track, I think just authorization for us to, to try to go get some money, is basically what we're talking about, Cindy.
So can I ask one question before that?
Sure.
If we, if we do, uh, scenario two, which is, uh, seven point six five million, and then look at the meals tax for the rec office, um...
Who doesn't have to be in rec office?
Sure, I understand, but I'm, I'm just, the reason I'm asking that is, that would allow us to, um, maybe there's some flexibility within that building, because, you know, until I see plans for it, I'm not gonna be able to say, we'll be out of your name on that.
Oh, no, we'd have another approval process.
I understand that, but if we want the scenario two, you'd be getting the RFP for the money that we know that we're gonna need, because all of that money is fixed on that radio system.
So maybe to give you some comfort, um, what we can do, if it's scenario two, probably chances are, probably like, we'll probably say eight million dollars, give or take, you know, and so the idea here is, if we ultimately adjust that downward, or slightly upward, if you want us to, for whatever reason, that, that's the thing we can always do. That, that's, so don't assume, okay, we're locked in, if the bank says to us, yes, we'll give you eight million, if, if we decide two months from now, we wanna make it seven seven or seven five, you're not going to change, it's not gonna change anything, meaning, we'll just end up...
And so, there, part of that three hundred and fifty thousand may be covered from other sources.
Sure.
I mean, I can't say for sure, but there, there may be help on that, where we wouldn't have to use that whole three hundred and fifty...
I understand, I'm just saying that, that, I think that's a good way to do it, because, you know, there's some flexibility as we see plans, or we may have discussions on what we want to see, or where it's even located may change.
And, and, uh, Mr. Booth was working on it today, he says he'll have something for you for the first meeting in March.
So think of that as an order of magnitude.
Sure, and I like, I like that scenario, just giving us...
Yeah. I personally like scenario two myself.
Yeah.
I don't know, that, over scenario one, but...
I think scenario one is, is more than, is, I think it's, it's raising too much tax dollars for this debt. What we're really trying to show you is, by being strategic, you really should be doing scenario two, that's all we're showing. I mean, scenario one is sort of like the starting point, so...
How do you need the motion worded?
Just the authorization.
It's just an authorization, it doesn't, we're all, if, if, again, we will ultimately be back in front of you, Mr. Booth, maybe one or a couple times, you know what I'm saying?
So authorization with the scenario you propose?
Yeah, we brought this scenario, again, it can change, it, it gets an order of magnitude, it's a box on it, and let's see what we ultimately think, uh...
See what comes in, and...
Right.
I'd make that motion when you're ready, Senator.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd make a motion that we authorize, uh, Mr. Davenport, uh, Davenport to help me to move forward on seeking on the RFP on, on, uh, option number two.
Second. Motion, second, in your discussion.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Ms. Cookenbock?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Terman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank y'all, and, uh, be safe, and, uh, we'll be in touch, thank you, I know, so...
Take a travel, Greg.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Cindy, what do you think on that A-one, yes or no? Do you want us to know? The closed session, A-one, was...
Would you be comfortable doing it in open session? Uh, what, what Steve said was, we're talking about constitutional employee, not county employee, and there's one, uh, ruling, I can't remember if it was authority or AG opinion, that it would need to be open, however, we're talking county money, and he said, on that basis, we could do it under closed, it was whatever we wanted to do. So it's just...
I'll leave that up to the chair and legislature, because I know what you're doing, I don't...
Yeah, I have no idea.
It's supposed to be in that envelope right there.
On the side, y'all know that.
I recall years, and, and things changed, and it's a different attorney, but I recall years ago that it was agreed that if it was a constitutional officer employee and not considered county employee, that we couldn't, but Steve's given a little different advice from that now, and there's been case laws since then. They were, they were children that did a stone block back when I got them.
He, he kinda left it up to us, he said, we'd do it open, don't name names, just do a very broad description of the situation, if we wanna go in closed, there is basis for that as well.
Well, we are going in closed, right?
But we're gonna be in closed for that matters.
Right, but we're going in for two others, so this would be the third.
Well, I'll just take a motion, you're in closed session, or two point two, true, three, seven, eleven, A-three, real property acquisition or disposition of public property for manufacturing and support services, um, A-five, prospective business, discussion of prospective businesses, location, expansion, and A-one for personnel.
Salary, yeah.
So, oh, I'll make that one.
You'd rather get there with me.
I'll make that motion.
And I said, Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Cookenbock?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Terman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yeah, you kinda have to make a motion, yeah. Uh, we need to have a motion, I would like to make this motion, for a budget supplement in the amount of eight thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents to increase the pay of an employee.
No, no, you're making a budget, a revenue...
Right, the revenue you're expending here to the Commonwealth of Tennessee is on the salary line. Right, on the salary line, and that is eight thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents, correct.
Second.
Second.
Motion second in your discussion.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Ms. Cookenbuck?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Terman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Let's see, a constitution officer, he works, like, if we go down the county administrator's report.
Okay, uh, the first item is, uh, we received a notice from the Dover Health District that we had some unstaffed firms that asked if we wanted them to reimburse us, or if we just wanna put it towards the budget for this next year.
Reimburse. I'd say reimburse.
Okay.
That's my vote.
So, you moved that, you moved faster reimburse.
I'll make your motion.
Second.
Motion second in your discussion.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Ms. Cookenbuck?
No.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Terman?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, the next item is, uh, we could pass the, uh, rehabilitation specialist contract at the last meeting, and it was something that we had agreed on with CERCAP. I've got CER, I think it's CERCAP.
Yeah, CERCAP.
Okay. Anyway, um, it went to V H C D, and they said, one, three, three words in that, they had, we have to strike because we had that program income would be used to pay that, and they said we cannot use program income. So, I'm just asking for approval, uh, approval of striking those three words in the contract that we had for...
You just stated that's a concern there, or...
I don't know, if we passed the original contract, I guess it would be better if we...
I'll make a motion for amendment.
Yeah, motion for amendment.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion for amendment to strike the three words, including program income.
Okay.
Three.
Ms. Cookenbuck?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Terman?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, the next item is, uh, you'd asked me to survey the largest employers in Floyd County to get a sense of whether we really need a self-test site for COVID-nineteen. We had been asked to look, uh, to start one by the health district, that they wanted to free up their resources to do vaccinations. But I gave you the results that we got from eight of the sites that we did, and it sounds like, uh, a lot of them are already gotten their employees vaccinated, or they've already made other arrangements. So, I would really recommend that we not move forward with the self-test site.
This was an excellent idea to do, for sure, because it really did give us a, a really good idea. Yeah, I'd do it, and it was like, oh, yeah, well, I thought you don't have to do it.
You know, all of us can kinda keep our ears to ourselves. We hear in our community that, that there's a need, and we're gonna...
Yeah, I, I found it very interesting that those who were do, uh, were having your test done, gave us an idea. And they were only saying two employees a week. Well, certainly isn't worth us spending our broads, it's for five people a week.
Right.
So, anyway, looking up consensus, we will not pursue that. Uh, Cindy. Uh, the next item is, we got, uh, two quotes for Phil and Rocker, the proposed Indian Valley Green Box Site. And they were very similar to each other. Uh, would you like to take this one, Mr. Coleman?
Sure. So, um, we've been forced to have a, um, property owner offer some property for the use of a green box site. Um, it's included a number of green boxes as well as recycling in. Um, myself, as well as, um, Mr. Thompson, I've been trying to survey the area to try to find sites. And, um, again, I've got a look in curiosity of this landowner, um, just making sure it's the best fit. Uh, and it is, and I haven't been able to find anything else. Uh, he has it, um, he just needs some maintenance to get it to where it needs to be, um, and to be safe for the trucks to be able to operate on.
Is it close to the other?
It is.
Side?
It is close to the other side.
Excellent.
The, um, only thing that, and I don't have, and I was hoping to have, um, is that the property owner has agreed to, um, working out an agreement for a number of years, um...
Excellent.
To protect the interest of the county. Um, he's agreeable to that, um, and I've contacted Mr. Yoder, and I was hoping to have that in draft form, but it melted. And I, I'm assuming he got busy and just hasn't had, so I'll follow up with him. Tomorrow, if he has that prepared, and, uh, especially like that, um, I know we need to do this, but I feel like we need to make sure all our options are in the road before we pop this through. Um, as soon as I get that, I would be asking the board to consider it. I feel like the citizens are very much missing this, they need it, and we don't have an option. There is no other options, and it is what it is. But, um, I want at the appropriate time, we'll make our request, uh, motion to, um, go with one of these proposals and have this fixed and prepared for the green boxes.
Is this, is this, um, is this one of those situations where we would want to take the little bit?
I think, I think it's a good bit.
I think so.
Yeah, really?
Well, we all want to take it.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, I think it's, uh, and they were so close, they kinda validated each other.
Right.
Right.
And I would like to, to find out, uh, how well can you just work with this, Mr. Thompson? He met me out there, more than once, to look at this site. And we started on this the same week that those boxes were removed. So, sometimes things just take time, and they do fall into place. But we gotta be sure that we get a safe place for people to get off of there, and these trucks to get off of there. And they're, I can't remember how much he told me they weighed, so that's why we're gonna have to make sure, empty they weigh in arms now.
I appreciate that, the work that you went, an extra mile you went to do this.
Yeah. It's worth your pain today.
No raises in the future.
No raises. Lots of cuts.
If I could just make one comment.
Yes, sir.
I think it's, I think it's, you've done a great job, good work, um, I'm sure constituents will appreciate that. Thanks, Cindy. I would, I would like to see us work on some of the other green box sites as well, maybe not all at the same time, but I, I think there is a real need out there in some of these sites, and I get a lot of comments from people, um, just depends on how they're laid out. Some of them aren't in good shape, some of them, um, one in particular, I know that I get comments from the, the church, and one of those trash pulling backs, so, you know, some of the sites may need some ground base down, so maybe fencing. But I think that, I think that, just around around the county, some of these sites are getting pretty, pretty rough conditions.
I think, yeah, one should have, uh, chain link ground to these two thirds of them.
Yeah, they keep these one.
And up at, um, Buffalo Mountain, they, they get Cheryl to look at, you know, I've towed David a couple times, but, you know, when they repaved the raid, you know, they put about sixty-eight inch wood on there. And people were prowling leaves, saying, look, you know, we can hardly get in and out of a car. They have to run at a forty-five degree angle. Came from tire now, bottom of the car.
That is a big problem.
It is.
It is.
Well, one thing I was gonna suggest, and, and we can do it after we get this site, maybe have Cindy Explorer or Linda by that time, whichever. Explorer, uh, maybe giving us, uh, some cost to fence in this new area, since it's the newest one, just to see what the cost would be. And, and like you said, start moving through the county on these other sites.
Well, there's, there's also a need, Lauren and I have talked about this, our, our, our boundary area is sort of lacking in a, in a site that, that we just have to find, because there are people that leave Floyd County and don't really have anywhere to put their trash in out on the outskirts of, like, Bethlehem Church and more, and, I mean, they're not going to town, they're leaving the county. So, I, I, I think that's something that, you know, we might wanna, uh, look at too. You know, our last trash study was five years ago, so, uh, solid waste study, I, I went back into my file cabinet and looked for it, and, um, you know, it's, it's something that's changing, and we know we have a, a situation, so...
Maybe it's time to do another assessment.
Yes, maybe, yeah.
I think we need, um, I'm sure your opinion, most.
I think that's...
Maybe every five years we do this, yeah.
And, and some of that needs to be, some of that needs to be, uh, where is our recycling boxes at? Now, I think if we really started looking at it, there's areas that we can't, I've got a trajectory, I've got recycling laws you can't want, but when you start heading toward, there is a run, pile area, there's none of those sites have recycling, so, you know, you start trying to make sure we have everything in place, um, because right now, you know, I know one case, the food bank over at Heaven's Chapel, um, dropped back to twenty-one to get five recycling for all the boxes. And they were thankful that we got recycling out there, uh, you know, uh, last night, thank you the other day.
They're coming all the way to town.
Yeah, but I thought when they said, oh, thank you so much for having us.
Still is longer.
Right.
Yeah, right, it's just longer.
People that are out, you know, and we've got green boxes sitting on every side of the building they're working out of, you know, and it's like, all right, maybe we can think through this and try to find a way to make it more accessible, but I think that's, um, but, but every time you do something, there's another effect of, I don't know where I was, so, it, it needs to, uh...
There, brought in.
Well, it needs to be a whole study put together, instead of us just randomly sitting on this table, putting darts on the wall, and saying, this is gonna work, you know?
Uh, I think this, this is a fair tip for the folks who are providing use for the property that we, and I will do a maintain robot and see what happens. But I'd like, and pregnant, to put a fence on Mr. Terman, and, and someone was talking about, just to try to keep that excess trash from flowing over.
Right.
And, and, you know, not, not restricting access, but just, you know, along the sides of it, on the backside of it. Just to keep the trash from flowing, and nice, these are all the sanitation folks, they're not walking down the woods picking up this stuff.
Because they do that.
Yeah.
I've seen it.
They can hear it, I can hear it.
Yeah, they are so kind, yes.
During hunting season, they said, oh, cans and here it goes, it goes across the bank, they're out, but...
All the sites have banks that they go over.
Yeah, and that eliminates some of it.
The other part of it is, I think for the better, we keep our sites, just the appearance of them, the less likely somebody's gonna be destructive there. So, if it looks, when you pull into the site and there's trash everywhere, and it's blowing across the field out back, not that big a deal, just to put a bag of trash out in the middle of it.
And go on.
It looks nice, you know, you think about it. It's just human nature.
Although I will say, our county citizens do an excellent job of maintaining a good working for the most part. I think a majority of our citizens, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I think a majority of our citizens are...
I, I, I see citizens all the time, they'll put their bag in the can, and they'll pick up around it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, I think it's, uh, it's all of us working together to make this thing right, so...
Good work.
Yeah, good work, definitely.
So, what do we need on next? When can you get your...
I think so, you know, we'll get it all ready, and then...
Put this back out?
All ready.
Uh, the next item is, we need to schedule a public hearing for the road abandonment on a section of Roseville Road. Uh, we have to post property for thirty days and send out certified letters to adjacent property owners. I talked to the person who's kind of leading the effort on it, and suggested April twentieth, if you like nighttime, uh, public hearings so that people can attend. It's the same night as the public hearing for the, uh, six-year plan.
Right.
But he, I think we've done that before, we've had that-to-that public hearings last, I think it was the same night as the six-year plan last year. So, if that is acceptable to you, I'd kind of suggest April twentieth.
I'd make that motion if it's approved.
And what time would you want? Would you have the...
Seven o'clock or, well, let's see, what time is that?
Seven.
Seven o'clock or sooner or after, uh...
Seventy? Thirteen? Sixteen, I'd be a little while.
I'd do the eight o'clock or sooner thereafter, just to be on the safe side. I'm sure we'll have other business.
You think we'll do that late?
I think we'll do that late.
But again, the only way we should have is before we would have a ready.
We're already down to seven o'clock, unless we change our meeting now.
Okay.
Yeah, eight o'clock or sooner thereafter, and if the road meeting goes quick, then we can do other business and then pick it up. Now, if I, if I saw your email correctly, uh, Mr. Dobson with D-Dot has made some suggestions to these property owners, and, and I would ask that before we approve or vote on anything on it, we check out what exactly they've done as far as right-of-way in entrance.
I, I, I contacted, I saw that too, and I contacted Alex Cheney, who he had kind of referred this project to. And she said she did not really understand what he was talking about, and she would get in touch with him and let me know, and that was just a day or two, but it was actually Friday, and I haven't heard that from her yet.
I took it as there's some kind of business being operated there.
She, she said she didn't really understand what it was about.
That would be the only way a commercial entrance would come into play. And, and so, I'm wondering if somebody's operating a business out of their home there, or whatever. If they are, then you've got a whole different entrance from that over just a residential entrance.
It's a large shop there, though, I mean, for personal use, I can't try to think of...
I, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
I, I'm not familiar with it, so I don't know.
I, I, I raised that point.
But I saw the, I saw what he said, and that's what went to my mind, there must be some type of business operating.
He has a, he has a reason, the only reason he doesn't...
Now, Will's pretty thorough, eh?
Yes, he is.
He's good at COA.
Yeah.
Well, we can hold a public hearing, huh?
They'll find out all that, we don't have to bump that knowledge.
Yeah, we don't have to talk about it, we're there for it. I'll start with you, bud.
Thank you.
Motion second in your discussion.
Ms. Cookenbuck?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Terman?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, the next item is, I don't know if you recall, but when we got our audit, there were a couple of, uh, recommendations for recreation. And one of the, uh, recommendations was, uh, handling of cash with concessions. They use volunteers, and you are handling cash, that is such a opportunity for, uh, not handling, you know, not accounting for it properly. And we thought maybe the best way to do it, and, and not only is it the cash, you know, that's what the auditors brought out, but our recreation director would tell you, it's hard to line up volunteers, know that they're gonna show up, that the things are gonna go smoothly.
Sanitary, COVID.
Exactly. So, we thought maybe the best thing to do would be to put it out as a request for proposals and see if any of our local businesses was interested in entering into a concessionaire contract with us, where they run it, give us a percentage of the tank, and then they get the rest.
So, very impressed with the, uh, RFP. I know I spoke with our recreation director, and he was very complimentary of all of your efforts and, uh, you know, helping him, and, and he did a lot of research, a lot of research, and, uh, it, it shows, and it's a good, it's a good, uh, it's a good one. So, if you're...
I just have a suggestion or two, after reading. If you go to the back of the second page, where it's talking about additional considerations, uh, under the last line of number one, I do believe that, I, I, and this is nothing against our director, but I think that contract pricing amendments to this agreements must be approved by the county administrator, not the director of recreation.
Yeah, that's probably...
And, and I don't have anything against him, I'm just looking at the stepping stones.
Oh, you're at, uh, item seven, contract administration?
No, this, it, on the front, look at the front, back of the second page, where it says additional considerations, C.
There's under, and any and all increases.
The last line of number one, under C. Change that from approved by recreation director to approved by county administrator. And the other question, and, and I'm sorry I'm not up on it, but I know there's a lot of, about the insurances in here. Um... Uh, we just need to make sure that we're covered for more than just bodily injury. I mean, we have enough food preparation people, we, you know, if somebody gets sick, we, we need to be co-named on any insurance policy, co-insured, and we need to make sure that they do have insurance that covers botulism or whatever, or whatever.
Yeah, the additional insured.
Yeah.
Right, additional insured, and Steve did look over this, did like that?
Actually, Steve is the one that drafted the terms and conditions.
Well, just make sure, because when I'm reading insurance stuff, it's like a Chinese fire, really, I just wanna make sure we're covered, we're co-insured, listed as co-insured on any policies.
Yeah, it is co-insured, yeah, that's what it's called.
And make sure that any of the insurance covers not just bodily injury and that sort of stuff, but that sort of stuff's more toward their employees and. I just have one thing, and I didn't see it, and I feel like I could have ever looked at somewhere in my west room. Section I, concession employees, be appropriate if it's not otherwise listed, they given a, missed it with the concession employees to be subject to some type of lawful background check, that they would be, you know, allowed to be there. We're required of our coaches and the staff, so they, they would have to, they need to be subject to background checks.
Or the, the company should be able to say these are folks that got screened by this service and they're bound to be permissible to be with you now.
Like if a law company did it, they did, and so they have that, they could submit names to us, and then we.
Yeah.
Pressing service.
So if it's some other large shell, they.
They would pass, when the authority had it, they had a lot of something that, actually, they could put you in.
How would you phrase it?
Say they, they provide a, a background check on employees that'll be there near business hours, or if there's, one of these stuff, it's, basically, I don't, Steve would probably need to, I don't know how, like, well, how you word that.
Yeah.
Not even be able to be in that setting.
Right.
And I know within this, it talks about setting up a committee, but I think you ought to put the bids out, and then the county administrator and us look at it rather than just the committee.
Okay.
I forget which section that's under, but.
What we had envisioned was something like when we had the audit committee a couple of years ago, where it was, uh, it would be the recreation director, the county administrator, and a, maybe a board member, or a coach, or something like that, but.
I understand, I think with this, for now, we, we just do it as a group, I think.
Yeah, if you could have a committee, if there was a multiple, you could have a committee that was recommended or recommendation.
Yeah, because that's what we did with the audit, we had a committee, and then they recommended it to the board.
Yep.
The, the beautiful, nice thing about committees, you don't go, and if you have questions, you can kind of, whereas this, in this setting, it's a little hard to have discussions with a company or something, does that make sense?
It's hard to remember what it was, dude, that's just my thoughts.
I think we're lucky this way.
I do, to be honest.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's.
I don't know.
Same in the past.
I know.
I used to, and especially with COVID, but, you know, we used to, we had Girl Scouts do it one week, church scouts do it one week, you know, church groups, but that seems to be a thing of the past, and COVID's really knocked it down here now, so.
On the other side of this, when you have different people using your facilities, the liability thing is.
Yeah, we, uh, we had that problem too.
You don't control some of the stuff as well as it should be.
Right.
So do you want us to make all these changes and bring it back to you, instead of approving it as amended, let's make the changes and bring it back to you?
I think so.
Okay.
That's good.
You know, that'll be if Steve's time to look at it, I'm sure.
Yeah, Steve read the whole thing and approved it, but let's, let's, especially write the language. Changes and let him look at it again.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, the next item is, uh, the bids for Lightning King in, in yesterday, and the, we had four bids. The lowest one was for $7,230. It was from Harris Construction. All four bids were, uh, met specifications, had the contract with license, and had proof of the liability insurance. Um, Mark looked it over and felt like it was a good bid, and recommends it for your approval.
I move.
Second. You saw the last thing, you leaned over.
There's our bed job. Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Ms. Cookenbock?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Terman?
Yes.
And the last item is, uh, bids for the new roof over the existing one at the transfer station. We had three bids, uh, the lowest one was from Price Building Inc., it was for $27,443. We had $25,000 budgeted for this project, so it's only slightly over. Uh, again, con, they all had contract with license, they all had the specific liability insurance, they all met specifications, so Mark looked it over and recommends Price Building Inc. for $27,443.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Cookenbock?
Yes.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Terman?
Yes. We're doing jerking hats on there.
Well, I told you, we just gonna have to take a certain kind of break, or we just gonna fly through this, and you decide to fly through it, so I'm helping you.
Any other new business?
Lord Denver time?
I'd just like to say thank you all for, um, the flower that you sent my family, it is a time of my grandmother's passing, and I appreciate each one of you, very generous, thank you. I don't want to say it personally, instead of, I was gonna send an email, I was like, I just, thank you each one of you.
Uh, take a motion to adjourn to Winsby, March the 3rd at 8:30 a.m. for a work session.
Here we go.
It's another second.
Thank you.